Notice that this meeting has been properly posted and media representative notified in accordance with Wisconsin statute section nineteen point eight four, one B. And they are going to call this meeting to order. Can I get a motion? Can I get a second, Jay?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Sorry, Jay. I'll slow down.
No problem.
All right, is there any revisions?
Yep, one revision, we're going to add personnel into new business as the first item.
And approval of the agenda? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to community participation. Let's move on to the approval of the minutes of the regular session, eleven fifteen. Can I, oh, yep, sorry. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And then moving on to new business then.
So on the, yep, on the amended agenda, personnel will be the first item, asking the board to approve the resignation of librarian Jovelle Sadler. Jovelle's gotten an opportunity to work with a library media publishing company and wanted to take that opportunity. That resignation will be effective December thirty first.
And will we accept the resignation?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then moving on to the resolution providing for a referendum election.
So the next two, the next two agenda items really have to do with making the decision about whether or not to go to referendum in April of twenty twenty-two. So a couple of things that we've done in the, to lead up to this, we had a community survey, got some good feedback from over almost a hundred and fifty different people about what they valued in the school, what they thought was great in the school, and the top answers all had to do with staffing, small class size, it is high quality staff, intervention for those students that struggle. So definitely need some validation of not only what we're doing, but how we need to grow as a district. And then we did also do a survey for the families and community members specifically with referendum. Smaller sample, and the majority was our family. So we know that, you know, one of our charges in if we move forward with the referendum is really finding new and more consistent ways to communicate with those community members that are not directly linked into our school. But the referendum survey, we had fifty percent in the flat question of would you support a referendum? Fifty percent of the people that returned the survey said they would definitely support it. Another twenty-six percent said they would probably support it. And that, so that was seventy-six percent. And if that referendum is done without a tax impact, which we anticipate being able to do because of the refinancing that we did last year, that went up to seventy-nine percent with twenty-four saying they would definitely support a referendum and four percent, or four people saying they would probably support a referendum. Obviously, that's, that's small sample, but I think it's an early indicator that, that there is some interest and support from our community in going to referendum. And I think, you know, when we think about last spring, you know, certainly the referendum didn't pass, however, the loss was, the margin was pretty small, forty-two votes. And so even with that, I think with a little bit more communication, I think not coming off of, I don't know that this year is any more normal than last year, but coming out of that, you know, into a more normal year, we may have some more, more luck with that. So what we're proposing is a non-recurring referendum, eight hundred thousand dollars a year for three years. So we've got two, two agenda items. One is the resolution that authorizes the school district budget to exceed the revenue limit. And then the second one is the question that puts the resolution on the ballot in April. We want to do one at a time.
Yep, okay. So can I get a motion for the resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed the revenue limit by eight hundred thousand per year for the next three years for the non-recurring purpose?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on for the question to go on the ballot, the resolution providing the referendum election, the question approval of authorizing the school district budget to exceed the revenue limit by eight hundred thousand dollars per year for the next three years for the non-recurring purpose. Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Okay, so item number three on your printed agenda board that we're talking about today is, in fact, the next two items are a follow-up on the public hearing that we had before last month's meeting on the return to in-person instruction plan and the continuity of, continuity of services plan. Both of those have to deal with the ESAR funds and the requirements that we have that were passed down to us by the state from federal regulations about around ESAR. So we did a public hearing last month, we opened, we had a survey at the bottom of that, those plans that people could fill out comments. The only comments that we got, just got two comments about some appreciation that the board is responding to the community and giving some, some parents' choice in working through mitigation, so. No, so what I would propose is that those plans won't change, there will be no changes based on what you saw last month.
And then, so can I get an approval on the community service plan?
Let's do the first one first, the return to in-person instruction.
Can I get approval on the return to in-person instruction plan?
Motion.
Motion, I'm sorry.
Okay. So moved. Second.
Second.
Can be changed.
So slightly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now moving on to the community service plan, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to further the community continue, continuity of the service plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, the next agenda item then is the creation of a fitness room attendant position. So one of the things that we heard last month, or this month, at our community listening session was to open up our buildings so that the community could have more access to our facilities. And so we're going to start that actually during winter break with some open gym and fitness hours and hall walking hours available for our community, but we'd like to continue that into January. By hiring a fitness room attendant, we can open up that fitness room for a couple of nights during the week and potentially some weekend hours as well. And so I think it's important to note that the expenses for the fitness room attendant come out of fund eighty, which is outside of the revenue cap. So that's important because it's not like we're hiring a fitness room attendant instead of hiring a teacher. It's two, it's two separate pots of money. So proposing that we establish a fitness room attendant position that we could hire for Jane and Deanne.
All right, can I get a motion for, to hire a fitness room attendant? I'll make a motion to hire a fitness room attendant. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And on to the second reading of the Neola policy updates.
So last month, we did the first reading of the Neola policy updates. Neola is our policy company. Twice a year, at least, we get a bunch of updates for our policies that are based on changes in the law. The board reviews them and then they become part of our policy so that their, our policies remain legally sound. So this is the, asking for approval for those, that group of policies in volume three.
Can I get approval for the second reading of the Neola policies?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then annually, by Act one forty-three in the state of Wisconsin around school safety, we have to have a safety drill that we have a formal write-up for and that comes before the board. So in your packets, you saw the write-up for a safety drill that was done in both buildings earlier in, I think, November. So that's in your packet. And then every couple of years, we have to have our crisis plan also approved by the board, but this is not one of those years.
Can I get a motion for the safety plan drill approval?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then moving on to communication reports.
Okay, annual reports from principals this month.
I'll go first. Just a couple of things, our winter concerts, Christmas concerts have wrapped up. I tell you, the four K kindergarten concert, it lasts about twenty-three minutes and is about straight cuteness. I mean, I cannot believe how quickly that thing goes, but it's all about those kids getting up and they did a fantastic job. And I'll give a shout-out to Hunter Alls and Karen Bullock for the way they prepared those, those one through three kiddos. They sounded great at their concerts. So that, that was really nice. Also, a, just a quick update with last Friday, went really, really well with everything going on around our staff, did a fantastic job on just supporting all of all the kids, making sure that it's professional with all the things swirling around, that it wasn't something that had to be brought up and talked in front of kids constantly. We do our drills, we make sure that they're prepared so they'll be safe, they know what to do. And I'm just very proud of our staff's actions on that day to make it as much of a normal day for the kids and keep them safe as we go forward. Besides for that, just really, everybody's really gearing up for the winter break and ready to enjoy some time with family. Any questions for me?
No, I heard your Christmas concert was very cute though.
They, they both were cute. I will say that, okay, but I will tell you that four K, five K, oh my goodness. And we had, we had one child that in between songs stepped forward completely unscripted and just says, "Merry Christmas, everybody!" You know, it just sounded like a plant, but it was just genuine and it was great. Stuck right back and I'm missing.
You have to watch it, it's on Facebook, it is so cute. It was right before they sing, sang, "We wish you a merry Christmas," and he goes, "We wish you all a merry Christmas." That was even funny.
Holidays are the competition.
All right, well, did all of everything that Luke said, Luke was awesome. He came up and actually helped me to run our safety drill up here, just because it was my first time through. Our staff did a fantastic job, students did an awesome job as well. One thing that we have had up and running now since the last board meeting is our REED one eighty intervention is like going, it's going really well. The students are really enjoying it, our teacher's doing a phenomenal job. So she's working with thirty of our fourth and fifth graders and then fifteen of our sixth graders right now, and it just is, is really going well. We are looking forward to post-winter break, and some of us just are thinking about the breakup, thinking about resetting after break. But our staff has come together and we're going to do kind of like a reset, just like a reset and reteach of the Beavrookwood behavior expectations, kind of do like a welcome back for kids, some more team building type stuff. So we're putting that together right now. There will be a Mighty Mustang video with the Beavrookwood expectations that I'm getting excited about. But I think that will be really good for kids to come back, feel like right away, you know, like welcome, we're glad to have you, but let's remember how we act in this building and make sure that we're being respectful to each other. So good things to come, good things happen and now. Questions?
Your concerts here were great too.
They were fab, they were really good. And you know, the best part of our concert, we didn't have like a little, like, you know, cue, but I thought our little people were still really cute all dressed up, even though they're fourth and fifth grade. But some of our staff members actually got to jam out with our band.
Yeah, that was really cool.
Miss Cantak got to play and, you know, Hunter jumped in there as well, Miss Bullock had the cymbals, I think, at some point, Miss Collins played at some point, so that was kind of really cool to watch them just like jam session with the kids. I told them, I was, I don't know, Karen was giving me the eyeball, like, Tori, can you play something? I've never played an instrument. I'm like, give me a try.
Try.
I'll do a ding at the end, that's all I can do. Luckily, I was off the hook for everyone's benefit, so.
I don't have any report tonight. I have just a couple of odds and ends things. We had our, we had our monthly meeting with the Walworth County Health Department today. So we heard some things, you know, cases are on the rise in Walworth County similar to across the state. Hospitalizations are on the rise, but not new hospitalizations. They're seeing right now about ninety percent Delta, two percent Omicron. And they're looking for places to hold vaccine clinics, will be held around the county in January and February. That brought a couple of questions from some of the superintendents about, you know, location. What they're finding though is that a lot of them, the littles, are not going to clinic, they're going to their, their primary care person. So more of a need for booster clinics, I guess, as far as the county's concerned. Test to stay was just approved by the DHS, so it's, it's just approved this week by the DHS, it was, you know, approved last week by the CDC. So that's an opportunity for kids to get tested, people to get tested and be able to stay in school. As at this point, we're not doing any testing. And Heather and I have talked about it, you know, we surveyed our families in the fall just to see, you know, if that was a need and didn't hear that it was. And she's been working with kids that are quarantining, you know, that, she has asked that question again, is getting no indication that people are struggling to either find a testing site or get tested. I think a lot of people are doing that potentially. So at this point, we're not going to look to do that. And it's part of the reason that we talked about it is there's enough that we're managing with COVID now. I don't know that, for as hard as she works, I don't know if it's anything that Heather's wanting to add to her list of things to do and it, you know, it doesn't seem like it's a need at this point from our parents or community. But certainly, we always kind of touch base on that to see if that's something that we should be adding in. Our district is certainly reflective of the county data, so we've, we've seen some more activity over the last couple of weeks. Maybe any parents got, you know, your text message today, we had some positive cases today. I, I think, you know, overall, we're seeing some quarantine fatigue from our parents, some of our kiddos, you know, it might be their third round of being in close contact to a positive case. And, you know, quarantining for our, is recommended but not required, and parents do have choice, they can, you know, so it truly is there, but a lot of parents are, still feel uncomfortable, maybe not quarantining if it's recommended. So I think we're, you know, everybody's just getting a little bit tired of that being a thing. Now, at the elementary school, we continue to quarantine whole classrooms at a time just because there's so much intermingling. The middle school, we've separated the desks now, so there's some space there. So that minimizes the number of kids that are close contact. To really do, to really do more with that in either building, we'd have to go back to a more restrictive spaced scenario. That's not out of the question, but you know, I, I meet with the Kenosha County SUCs, like our conference schools, and we meet with Walworth County. And sometimes when we check in, different schools have more positive cases and sometimes, you know, sometimes you're in the high group and sometimes you're in the low group. And, you know, if there were, if there was a mitigation strategy that, even if it was more restrictive, that was really preventing schools consistently of being in a higher group, I would say we really want to give some weight to that. All things may help some, but definitely there's not one thing that people are finding that's really mitigating those, those things. Now, I will say that some of the districts aren't contact tracing. So, you know, from a parent standpoint, I guess that's better because you don't get the call from Nurse Heather that your child's a close contact. But the negative is that potentially there's more spread. And I guess beyond that, you know, we've tried from the very beginning of all of this to really be transparent with our families, to make sure that, that they had all of the information that they could to make the decisions that they had to make. And, you know, as we, Heather and I have talked about it, you know, close contact tracing is, is one of those pieces of information. Parents still have the opportunity to make a choice about quarantining, you know, they can still make, they still have a lot of choices, but at least they're not just getting a letter that says, well, there was a, you know, there's a positive case in your child's grade or a positive case in the school, your child may be in close contact and everybody gets the same letter. To me, if, if you're a parent that is really worried about your child's exposure in the school setting to COVID, that's almost more unsettling than getting a call saying, well, you know, we've done the tracing, your child is one of those people that's been identified as a close contact. So I don't know that there's a perfect answer, but, you know, we're really committed at this point to continuing to contact trace and providing our families with that information. One of the changes that you might see in the dashboard after the first of the year is we may look at like a seven-day average, where you have your, the current positive cases, but then kind of that span. So you just get a general feeling, because it's hard to track activity unless you're really watching those numbers every day. If, you know, the two cases that go on and the two cases come off, you know, so we're seeing more activity, I think, than what it looks like on the dashboard unless you're really tracking the day-to-day. So sometimes that seven-day average might be helpful. In January, Heather and I are going to do a message for families that just talks about how masking and quarantining, or masking and vaccinations change that quarantine message. You know, I think we're respectful of the, it's not a, it's not a, we're going to mask, you must mask, you must get vaccines, but I think it's important for families as they're trying to sort out these decisions in their own houses to say, okay, well, what, what does this, what does this maybe provide opportunities for that we didn't have before? Or maybe this makes me feel better about not quarantining if I know that the recommendation, you know, changes with vaccine? Or maybe this helps me to feel better about getting my child vaccinated or sending my child in a mask if I know that that, you know, benefit is not to quarantine or, not to have to quarantine as long. I don't know, but I think it's, you know, I think it fits in with our overall message of trying to be really transparent and, and making sure that our families have all of the information, you know? Choices continue to be theirs, but they have all the information that they need to, to make the choice that fits for them, so.
I think it helps them understand why this one gets quarantined this way and this one, like, because you, everyone talks and you hear it and, I mean, so it'll help wiggle those things out.
Yeah, well, and it doesn't help that, you know, all the schools are doing something different. Like, I sit on these meetings and like, everybody's, you know, it's ten days, it's fourteen days, it's with masks, it's without masks, it's, you know, it's your test to come back and, you know, there's a lot of different things out there. You know, I think one of the things that, you know, we've talked about for the past now almost, almost two years, is that there's new information all the time. People are doing the best they can with what they have, they're trying to make decisions that are right for their school setting, for their school community, and that just leads to variance and, not variance, Omicron, but variance in the results. And so, you know, I think we want to make sure people stay informed, we want to make sure that we continue to give our families choice and options and be sensitive to, you know, where they're at as a group. And, you know, and monitoring kids, so. I like the transparency though, I think that's, you know, with all the options, you know, available and like, and the impact it can have or can't have and, you know. It's been a hard round, you know, we've had some kids in sixth and eighth that are on round three. Some of them haven't gotten any, you know, they're hanging around either with the right or wrong people, I'm not sure which ones, but, and so that's hard, you know, as a parent, you're like, ah, that, you know, it's so disruptive to everything.
It's like my daughter's just like a magnet.
Yeah, you know, don't talk to anyone, stay away from everyone.
Stay the course.
Yeah, so our, anybody that is middle school kids will know, we, we didn't twiddle all the desks six feet away, but we did, we did pod things so that we're minimizing the number of close contacts, so they still have some togetherness, but it's, it's not quite as, you know, I think it's not quite as.
Pretty.
Yeah, yes. So just a little community listening session follow-up. So we talked a little bit about open gym access, which will go start during Christmas break. This will really start giving us an idea, I think, of, you know, what the level of interest is for those kind of programs and, and I'll be here during those days just to kind of see, see what that looks like. Of course, if we have no snow, I don't know that our data will be, you know, that one we decided to put the flyers together on a day where it's still like balmy, and I know he's going to want to come in, they're all going to want to be outside, so we'll see how the snow changes all that. Winter wellness, we'll be starting, we'll be pushing this out after Christmas, starting with Saturday basketball programs for students in grades eight through six. I mean, mostly it starts late January, goes into the month of February. And then in January and in March, we're going to be doing some sports on Saturdays programs for elementary students. That'll be at Brookwood Elementary School, Brianna Brenix is going to run that, and Jess Metcalf is going to run the Saturday basketball, she's our middle school coach. And then Tracy Derrickson, who's a parent in our community, community resident, is offering free yoga on Mondays in the month of January and will continue with some yoga, so we're getting some yoga back for, for our year. No, we're going to do it downtown at the elementary school and the gym just because there's just a little bit less conflict, you know, with basketball and then we've got some other things going on. And then, you know, it's space, the gym's so big, and so I think that downtown would be better. We also, last week pushed out a neighbor-to-neighbor program, so that came up in our community listening sessions, come up before, you know, how do we, we know we have kids that want to do some service in the community, but, you know, we don't necessarily always want to take school time to do it. And we can't, in this day and age, just send children out willingly to do things out without any supervision or support. And so we're asking families to sign up to do some volunteering with their community and, within their neighborhood and their community. And so what I hope will happen is, you know, the, the work commitment time will be minimal, but I'm hoping that families will, it'll be another opportunity to connect with either the elderly or some infirm within their neighborhood. And it may start with neighbor-to-neighbor, but just maybe just a feeling of being good neighbors and checking in on each other and making a connection that way. So my goal is to collect families this month and then in January and then start reaching out for people that might want to be, may be in need of some support for that. And then there were some other things, interesting things talked about at the community listening session with some card clubs and book clubs and we'll, nobody needs to be adding things to their calendar in December, so we'll just kind of table that until January and then push some things out. So, you know, what we're going to be asking for with that is that if there are people in the community that want to facilitate, want to facilitate a book club, want to, you know, have a sheet set group, or that, that people step up, bring their friends with them and kind of get some of those things organized. Because, you know, one of the things that we talked about with a small school staff is, you know, we, we can't, not everything can start with us. And, you know, this shared ownership that the board talked about, one of our values, you know, for our district, this, this really gives people some ownership in not only using our facility, but then doing some of those, those fun activities, so we'll see. And then our next issue of Genosity News will be out first week in February, so we'll be able to pull some, push some things out in that as well, as well as referendum things now, so. And then, you know, part of my role as superintendent is to make connections with legislators. It's probably not my number one most comfortable part of my role, but I did, last Monday, had a meeting with Representative August. things that he was working on in the legislature. So, he is interested in putting together a legislative breakfast in March, which they used to do with F. Lynn, so talk with other representatives in his district. We talked about, you know, some of the Esar two and Esar three funds and, you know, I think it was one of the things that's kind of a good conversation, you know, from his perspective as a legislator, I think, you know, he's really concerned about the school financial management and how, you know, the Esar funds are managed within school districts. And, you know, I think one of the things that we did with our Esar two funds was a virtual academic coaching last summer. So, that was really targeted to help kids, you know, bridge those, fill in some of those learning gaps. And it was a program that we wouldn't have been able to do without Esar two funds and it really gave us an opportunity to do that, which he was very supportive of because it certainly, I think he recognizes the, the learning gaps there. But I don't think all of the legislators and maybe him included really recognize that when, without getting the additional money for, for people's spending and, and getting the message that those Esar three funds should really fill in that gap, that took away some opportunities that we would have to do some of those kind of special learning gap things. And so, you know, I think that why that's, it's, it's just so important to have those conversations because, you know, I always say, you know, school people, this is how we are. We, you know, we see everything through the lens of education. But I think that's true with any profession you're in and legislators too, you know, they, they have decision-making lenses that they use. And so, I look forward to future conversations with them just to, you know, share the information. He's very open to having us send things about our district. And he's been down here a couple of different times too, so I think he has a good lay of the land. He has some really good questions about student mental health and what that looks like in, in schools and also staff burnout and mental health. So, I was pleased that he was kind of attuned to that. And then did give me, maybe because I put it in a line in here, it's for sure going to happen, but some indication that there wouldn't be another year of that zero budget increase here. So, we can only hope that that will be, that will be true for him. So, it was a good meeting all the way, all the way around. And then I told Lisa I would introduce her at the beginning and then I forgot, so Lisa Baldwin's with us today. She joined our district as a district administrative assistant in November. So, it's her first run with the minutes. She's very excited, probably not as excited as Nicole is, not yet. And then just wanted to share with the board that Helen found out today that she is now a certified administrator. So, this is her course work.
Thank you.
And on Saturday, I was a part of the graduation ceremony at Edgewood because I completed my doctorate. So, I can demonstrate. All the good things all the way around. And that's all I have today.
Any board reports or comments?
Hello, Paul.
Just apologies for my tardiness and appearance.
You're fine.
Just got here from work, obviously, I don't wear this on a regular.
I got the pancake breakfast, I snuck in and out quickly, but it seemed to look nice. The pancakes are great, even bringing them home, my favorite pancake place.
They had quite a turnout this year. I'm anxious to hear what the numbers were, but it felt busier than it has in prior years. And I don't know if that's the, I know the Lions Club has got an influx of new members and that's exciting. BFO, I think, with their Santa show here, brought a lot of excitement and some, some families and...
I liked quite a bit of the BFO, I popped in.
Yeah, they did very well. We're very busy, mainly the pancake day, we're very busy, but it was nice because it gave families an opportunity to leave their kids with us. Parents stayed in the library area and then kids picked their items, we wrapped them and then parents gave us their credit card or their money to pay for the items. So, it's just different, you know, so and then parents really don't know what's under the tree. We tried to tell the kids, this is a secret, don't tell them what it is, but, you know, it's hard, it's a lot of days before Christmas, so.
Yeah. The BFO this year had put some Brookwood-themed items out with the spirit stuff, so I thought that was kind of a cool idea. My kids loved the pancake breakfast. I brought my, my two little, well, my three littlest ones, my oldest had a basketball tournament, but they just loved it. And from like a mom perspective, it was really nice to be able to come and see Santa and not pay a hundred bucks at the mall, brought a picture, you know. And they, you know, it was just really, really well organized, we were able to have breakfast, the BFO was great. But Murphy did come out and he immediately told me, "Mom, I just bought you a keychain." So, I know, I know what's under my chest.
Still act surprised, act surprised.
Your pep talk did not work on that. They were even nice, like, we did the carryout and they're like, well, Cynthia, they gave us, we got three carryouts, there was like, four pancakes each and I was like, oh, we had pancakes for a few days, which was fine. But I just thought it was nice of them to think like, it's, you know, all you can eat, so here, take extra, like, they really, and yes, there was a lot of new faces compared to the last time, but they did a great job. Yeah, it was really nice.
Anything else before we... Okay. And then our next regular meeting is January 17th in this room and our next work session is January 12th. And can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you and have a Merry Christmas, everybody.
Yeah.
Merry Christmas.